To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, all. We return to our white winterland here. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries.
Motion to approve minutes from the previous meeting, eleven twenty-six. They look to be in order.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side? Motion carries. General public concern.
That's a nice sign.
That is a good sign.
You're beating down.
Now, if you want to move forward. Do you want to come forward or are you just happy sitting next to our radio guy or heel of the rash? Love to hear.
I don't have to come forward, but I do want to give you this is a even year, so just there's. So just a reminder, um, you might have to, oh, no, it's here. Sorry. Just a reminder that on even years, we do the full biannual report and on the odd years, we just give you kind of a one sheet synopsis of the previous year. So one thing I do want to point your attention to before we go too far into detail in the report is behind your request letter, we do have our organizational statistics and I wanted to point those out largely, which is I think has a significant impact. Keep in mind when I say this, every year, we only chart the projects that we touch ourselves. So if we didn't have any role in the project whatsoever, we don't list that as a project that we've assisted with. So certainly not any different than any other request year. We've had a lot of success in the last two years. We've had a lot of success in the last nine. We've been thankful, you know, I would say, I think probably last year and this year, definitely, I think we've seen that in organization that what we do really does work only for projects. You know, obviously, there's only so much we can do as an organization, but when we partner together, we can do a lot. And I think we saw that on the daycare project. So definitely thankful for your support as we continue. Your biannual request, or your biannual report does highlight, I have the same categories and will probably do that. This is our third year in this report and will probably continue to do that. Those are the main areas that we focus on and I hope that you guys are probably excited about something. So the style about reports that you have on the other side of your packet just highlights some of the things that we've done in two thousand seventeen and eighteen that we feel most proud of. Obviously, we have a workforce issue. We know that. The Midwest knows that. The state of Iowa knows that, but we're trying to do some things a little bit differently. So Humboldt County, one of the things that we're working on right now is bringing a speaker that's actually recommended by the State Department of Economic Development to talk about workforce and coming outside of comfort zones and things like that. So we will be offering that presentation in February. We do obviously have quite a number of career programs that we offer as well. On the business expansion side, in the last two years, we saw three major expansions and another one is currently being discussed.
Oh, so that speaker would let me for like businesses?
Yeah.
People to listen to?
Yeah, I mean certainly like municipal city councils and we would encourage them to come as well because they manage staff. But it's really going to be focused on that high level management. It's about changing the workplace culture and accepting diversity and I don't mean diversity from an immigration standpoint necessarily, but how do young workers deal? How do women work with men? And just making sure that your workplace is inclusive because I think especially with manufacturing, it's such a highly male dominated field, it happens to encourage women to get into the workplace. And so she'll talk a lot about that. I think it'll be really successful to do these super decisions of stepping outside of our box a little bit, but I think it'll be, I think it'll be good for the business to see about.
So it'll be like at the school or like in the auditorium?
Actually, we're probably like rough dicks because we're going to serve a meal. I mean, we still want to keep to our meal type. We tend to get the best crowds.
Food and beverages.
Something about food and beverage, bringing people?
Right. So what we're talking around is do we do a breakfast or do we do a lunch? Sometimes it's easier to come straight from home and not even get into the office yet before you tackle the chaos. So that will be in February. We just talked about some dates. So I think it'll be really good. She spoke for the date and she's also recently spoke for Spexer and they thought she was really good. So I think that'll be, it'll be creative. I'm right, we have to get creative with workforce. So that'll be wonderful. We are, it's still actively participating or offering our internship program. The next semester starts here in January. We've placed over seventy students since we started that program and I'm not sure if you're aware, I don't know if anyone from the county was there, but we were invited to speak at the governor's future ready Iowa event on our internship program. So I think that that's something good for Humboldt County is to put ourselves out there and have them recognize some of the great things that we're doing. Wowzers, can we do a great trade? So in this workforce struggle, we've identified that if we can encourage people to live here, then they'll work here. And so what wonderful things can we offer that will help people live here? And certainly, we've been quite blessed with the Nielsen Staley's donation, so we'll talk that up to people. They certainly want to live here and lose that amenity. So what else can we do? And one thing that's emerged, and Rick is your representative on the HCA board, but also sits on the Humboldt County Housing Board, and one thing we've talked about is how the heck do we work on housing and housing that people can afford?
That's a big thing, getting where they can afford it.
Absolutely. And what I mean by that, to afford is the average worker. So what we're trying to do for Humboldt County Development is recruit workforce. And yes, that means engineers and doctors and lawyers and things like that, but it also means general laborers and CNC operators and machinists. And so how do we find housing for that demographic? And so we're working on that, right? I think, I think we're getting aggressive. I think we'll get there, but I think that needs to be a partnership between the city Humboldt County Housing and Humboldt County Development. You know, one thing we've noticed, and I'm sure Rick would say this, is Humboldt County Housing doesn't have paid staff, right? So how do you, how do you move those projects forward? And we've identified Humboldt County Development that we need to play a role in that just to make sure that we continue those discussions. So that, of course, is a focus. From an industry standpoint, we still offer our CEO networking events. Wowzers, we had the one at Direct Center was our most recent one and we said fifty-five people, so that was a, that was a good one for us. Our next one won't be until this spring. Where we're going, so we always like to talk at the end of this about, you know, so we, here's where we've been and where we'd like to go and where we know that we can, we can make a difference. And certainly, we'll keep the main focus that we have, which is workforce right now. But obviously, we've been asked to expand, we do career programming to the sixth graders and the eighth graders in Humboldt County. We've been asked to expand that, so we go every other week now, which is great. I mean, those partnerships are really wonderful. So we really do have, as we do every year, an aggressive agenda and I think we do a pretty good job of staying on task and staying focused. Sometimes we get derailed and we work out something like a random hotel or a random daycare center, but the core for us is obviously industry and relationships to make sure that we were retaining those industries. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Our request is staying the same as it was last year, so no increase in requests, the same request, but we'd sure love to have your support.
So if we had, if you had a number, I mean, I'm just going by entire business, if they were able to get five busloads, ten bus, I mean, I don't have a clue what we're lacking in people.
Wowzers.
Hundred, is it two hundred? Is it? I mean, I'm talking all the businesses where you look at the Humboldt paper or you look on the internet and see there's a lot of jobs that are available and people, you know? So I guess I'm just kind of curious what, what would?
We gathered that data from the future ready Iowa presentation we did, the day of October, so it's about thirty days old. There's about a hundred and thirty seven open jobs in Humboldt County. And that's great because that means they're growing, but we don't have a hundred and thirty seven open jobs. And so the other thing that we have to, and that's what we spoke about at future ready Iowa, the other thing we have to remember is that today, you work at ABC company, so I'm not counting you, but then you move over to Wright County or Algonite, doesn't matter, and now it's lots, you're saying that's a hundred and thirty-eight. You see what I mean? And so we're not taking into account that recycling and we've always recycled. I mean, since I've been here, that's just the nature of the beast. We recycle very largely with Webster County, Wright County and Kansas County. We know that. Our labor show's that. But with the workforce crisis we're all feeling, suddenly, that quarter that Algonite's offering you is that much more advantageous than what you're making today. So there's a little bit of a wage war until that settles down a little bit, which truly probably won't happen to entrepreneurship hires. I think, I think we're going to, those numbers grow and we already can't fill them, so.
Well, I see that, I mean, leaving early in the morning, it used to be the southbound traffic was going towards Fort Dodge, but there's a lot of traffic coming north towards Humboldt from that direction and then there's not as much coming from the north towards us, but we still have the people that work at, say Snap-on or whatever up that way that are, you know, filling those jobs. But I guess I was just kind of curious to know what, if we had to be able to bring a couple of busloads of people, what would our number of hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty?
Yeah.
He drives you a hog fl, Humboldt sausage. Look at the license plates out there. Most of them are Webster County.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's truly in the wage war, unfortunately, and that's hard for businesses, but that's where we're at.
This gal is coming to speak. She's love us to speak to the businesses of how do you retain your workers?
Absolutely.
So they're not leaving for fifty cents.
That's right. That's right.
Workforce environment.
That's exactly right. And one of the things that I think we struggle with most, and it's not us, it's not Humboldt, it's just the demographics in general, is our baby boomers are leaving, right? And so we're replacing those with millennials. That's a huge generational gap on understanding technology and the baby boomers work with their hands and the millennials don't want anything to do with that. And so how do you bridge that gap? Because absolutely, you have to retain the people that you have. There's knowledge in some of those baby boomers, but the young people need to come in. And so how do we help that? How do we keep what we have? And I think sometimes those differences in the workplace are what causes you to change, chase the quarter fifty cents or?
And for years, we all pushed kids in high school to think they gotta go to a four-year, get that four-year degree to become the engineer and become the doctor or whatever. Well, most of them aren't that caliber. Nothing against an engineer, man, I don't think I would.
We've got more faults than that.
Well, because of the fact that I went to an engineering school, you know, but there's a lot of people that are just, you know, two-year trade school back and turning a wrench and there's nothing wrong with that. And we have to break that habit of thinking that everybody's a four-year student.
Right, and the registered apprenticeship program is trying to do that. Truthfully, I think to break that, you have to go back to mom and dad. I know that, I know that's hard, but the kids get it because when you tell them you're going to make forty thousand dollars if you participate in this registered apprenticeship program, they get googly eyed because that's a lot of money at that age. And so you could sort of, you can sort of attract to them onto the contest, but it's the parents that have said, yeah, you need to go to a four-year university or you at least need to go to trade.
Well, we all want our kids to do better.
For sure, for sure. But I tell you what, though, that math, there's, I mean, you're paying sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars back to whatever university you went to, you're paying nothing. Because the registered apprenticeship programs, the businesses will often do for the employee just as a way to retain them. So, yeah, there is absolutely that conversation.
Well, I like the idea of the school trying to push that and help, you know, those kids that are?
I think it likes a spark, you know, shows them what's available out there.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
All right.
I talked to Ron Sands in the middle of the summer and he said he could hire six or eight more people right now. But he says they want to do this, they don't want to do this.
I know, and actually Joel gives me a hard time because he's been saying that for a while. I mean, he would not, Sands would not necessarily be a business that I would think of when we talk about workforce struggles. And even he said, I mean, it trickles all the way down, plumbers, electricians. I mean, we don't have, that's one thing I think we could do better is focus on that entrepreneurship component. So who is that, like you said, that turns a wrench, that can be a welder and open some sort of welding shop? We need a little bit more of entrepreneurship.
Little more, small business owners have two, three employees.
Well, there's probably a lot of them that want to do that, but they're lacking the ability to have the cash to go out on the edge and say, here, I can open that shop or?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, our evolving market is huge, so I mean, I think we could certainly help with that at a very low interest and amortize that as well as we possibly could. I think the fear is people. I mean, why expand if three people and you're overworked, you expand, you can find three more people, you know? I mean, it's the case.
Finding, finding good employees is the biggest problem.
Absolutely. I mean, we literally have businesses, the one that I noted in your report, I didn't put the business, but literally said, what do you want me to do? I can expand our, how do I find the people? And that's why I don't know what to tell you. I mean, it's true, you know? So I think you save that cash until you can, you can find those people, it's unfortunate.
And try to make the, I know you mentioned at one of the meetings, these younger generation, they look for a community they want to live in, then they look for a job after they pick the community, which is different from years ago. You used to get your job and then you just went wherever the job.
That's what I did.
Yeah, yeah, no, the millennials. And so that's the hard struggle for us is, you know, industry development is very important to us, but community development has to be there too. I mean, you have to put those two things together. Where do they live? Where do they take their kids to daycare? Where do they go to hospital? So making sure all those pieces fit is absolutely, yeah, you're right, one of the cool things to do, so.
Well, you go through, you go back to the housing deal, you know, you go through Badger. They have that little development there on the east side of town. Webster City has the one out there on the south side towards Highway twenty. And I know that you guys are working diligently trying to figure that out and figure, you know, but it, years ago, wasn't that how Rainbow Drive ended up happening?
Yeah.
So they went in there and made that little tiered dock up there that filled all them houses and think of all the people that have started their families in that area and then bought another house. That's kind of what our plan is. I mean, if we could find a place like that, develop, start developing it and get a few houses going and start to type home.
The plans are in the works.
Yeah. I mean, and we keep referring to Rainbow Drive type project.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta keep the cost down where the, where the working person can afford it, the guy who's working, you know, like you said, the guy who doesn't have that four-year degree, he's, he's working in town where they can afford it.
Somebody that's working for like Rammer's Trucking?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, and I think the trick there though, and we've seen it with Webster City, but it's not hard enough for you guys to build two houses. I mean, so finding that developer, that partnership that's willing to take just as much of a risk as you are and do, I don't know, ten, fifteen units, that's a challenge too. I think we've, I think we've gotten that far. I think we know who that would be. Now we just have to make sure it's profitable, so.
Right.
Does Humboldt have a building trades program?
Yes, yeah. We've had, geez, seventeen, twenty years.
I think they've done pretty good building those and getting them sold and?
They build a house every year.
Okay. That's what I'm realizing.
And some places.
But that's the way it was. Is it still that way, Leslie?
Yeah, I mean, it's still, it's the only, the only thing I would say and not to, but there's still too expensive for the average worker.
Yeah, they're, they're building these houses now that are three hundred thousand dollar houses.
Absolutely.
Serious?
Yeah.
The building trades are. The building trades, the last one was what, three forty-five?
Yeah.
Wow, you've really stepped up the game.
Did they get the ones in the south part of town or them the hundreds?
Oh, they're sold.
Or they're all sold?
Yeah, they're all full.
You've really done good.
She's amazing.
Yeah, the duplex, those worked out really well too. That was the first time the building trades, I would say, did something.
Yeah, different.
Less than, yes, but typically, so how to present a team, just as you said, those are beyond the average worker. I guess that.
Yeah.
And it's still a great program. I'm not taking anything with, don't say I'm bad, but.
Well, I was talking with Jeff Birdy, you know, they've had numerous kids that went through that program.
Yeah, and they hired, kept them around.
And of course, they all get the bug, well, then pretty soon they're doing it on the side and?
And sometimes they come back.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting thing about that, so you talk about this, you know, great divide between four-year, well, we know that in order to participate in building trades, your schedule has to be quite flexible because you have to pass out of college courses. So what we're seeing is a lot of kids are now having to struggle between, do I do building trades, do I take college classes? And so we've seen numbers in building trade participants go down a little bit, which I'm not entirely concerned about, but at some point, it would, I think it would be a concern, do we have enough to do at home? So there's a struggle there, I think, in making sure that they have that time and that schedule.
You know, part of this problem might be also, and I don't mean to criticize the school, but there's so much emphasis on free college courses.
Yeah.
That it's getting to be an erode of all the vocational things.
Yeah, well, and we see that with our internship program. So we, we get the kids that are interested and the list is always like fifteen, twenty. And by the time the college course work comes out, it drops down to about ten or twelve because they've opted to take this class during this period of learning.
The two hit the nail on the head. It starts with the parents.
It does, for sure.
And it reenforces for the school, but one of the two's got it.
Right.
And like you mentioned, you go to four-years at Iowa or Iowa State, you walk out of there eighty thousand dollars in debt.
Oh, my Lord, yeah. I live and prove.
They're taking the college courses in high schools, right? A year.
Oh, well.
Well, anything else for Elizabeth?
Well, I just, you know, it is Humboldt County Development Association and it's been brought up in this conversation, but remember, you know, this is typically rural and there is what was brought up. There's these small businesses out there, you know, whether they're an electrician or a plumber or whatever that aren't in the city proper, that are struggling with the same employee issues. So I mean, hopefully, we don't, you know, forget that it's countywide, it's not just citywide.
Right.
It is because, and I mean, in this colony and every colony, these small businesses, whether they are a concrete contractor or an electrician, they're running, they're having the same issues. They're having the same employment issues and it's just, it's epidemic. It's epidemic.
What I would ask you guys to help on is certainly when you talk about like, let's just use your concrete contractors, I can possibly know all of them throughout the entire county.
No, but.
So when I send the information to you guys, send it to whoever you want to. It's not exclusive. I will tell you if this is just for the supervisors, like, don't send it out. I will tell you that in the message. You're always welcome to send that. Our networking events, if anything, they can come and find out what Suzy's doing over here for their HR program. I mean, there has been some really good things that have come out of just letting the businesses talk to one another and that Eric has opened any one, any business in Humboldt County.
Well, yeah. Or like you say, the low interest funding.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Business expansion and things like that.
Because it's, it's just epidemic. I've talked to so many different people that just all this, through this discussion, that they need employees.
Absolutely.
And they, they struggle. Whether it's an industry or it's like you say, the more private run business, it's just epidemic.
It's affecting everyone.
In this part of the, at least in this part of the state. So, you know, we don't want to discount that. Like I said, I don't.
Even our numbers are down. When we have one position open, it used to be we'd get thirty, forty applicants. The last time we had two positions open, I think we got like twenty.
Really?
Yeah, I talked to, I maybe don't put this in the background, but I talked to Agart Dr. and he said that they found indeed to be really successful. And so he said that they may get thirty or forty within the first week and he said he had posted it for a week and he got to answer. And of course, they say, you know, we want you to have these five skills. He's like, no, if I'm gonna have any skills, but you gotta take advantage of them because, you know, they just, they're not there. And so it is, it's an epidemic is the right word.
I think there's things that are going in the right direction with the trades programs and the internships and that, but.
And that's, I think, the school, the high schools need to push the kids more into the trades.
More course ready, is what they call it, whether it's.
I think they have that.
Well, living for two years or?
You can, like the old saying, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make a horse to water.
Right, right.
But there's still a reason why the people that walk key in some of those towns are growing so fast, because there's still people that are going, they can't make a living in Humboldt. We're going, we're going to go to the cities. But yet, I don't know how you're going to make a living down there when you're buying a house that's four times as much, your cost of living is another times as much.
Somebody mentioned back to parenting, you know, we don't want to get in that discussion, but it's just a mindset too.
I know.
I'm a little loose on you.
Go ahead. By, by that token, you know, there's anything that any organization can do to teach work ethic either.
That's right, that's right. Well, and that's the other part of it. I mean, just someone that wants to show up at eight because their job starts at eight and not eight o'clock.
It's, it's just very rough for them.
I mean, you're, we're literally at the bottom of the barrel and I don't mean that disrespectfully to anyone that's recently been hired, but yeah, it's, epidemic is the right word. Hundred percent agree with that.
Keep, keep going through it and working towards, you know, what we need to have here.
It's time.
Well, we appreciate it very much, Elizabeth.
Yeah, appreciate all your work.
We know you work hard.
If you have any questions, be more lenient and I will respond to that.
No, I'm not sure we do know where to find you. Is it down here or are you over here?
We have.
We never know where you're at.
Never really know where you're at. I can look for the blue band over there.
That's right. If you don't see it in front of you, hold it and just drive right back up here.
All right. Lee, thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet.
Well, Ben, it's not our fault. Elizabeth is on and on and on.
Hey, you found it very inspiring.
I did, I did.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. I'll see you next week, James.
Thank you.
Generation X, I'm not a millennial.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. I didn't know that.
Holy moly. You're one of the problems, children.
Not yet. I'm a couple years ahead of the problem.
Well, I mean, that is a problem, finding people that are willing to work, like you said, not.
Fifteen years ago, us hiring people, the Jets had the same problem then. They wanted to show up the first day and then they might be late the second day. We had a guy once we hired and he lived within four or five blocks of the company out there and he couldn't come to work because snow cloud didn't clean his driveway. Can you walk up there? I'm not walking to work. That's the way they think.
Well, it's definitely a different world, different culture, different.
It must be.
I don't know if there's so many freebies out there that nobody's working or.
There's a lot of it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of it. The government's made it too comfortable to be.
Government program. I've heard some people turn down a dollar an hour wage because they'll cut out all their freestyle.
But I could believe that.
Well, the only thing that I've got on the agenda today, I know we talked about it here probably a month ago with our temporary part-time help. But Chris' friend had sent me a message, I guess last week, about making it official and then looking through, uh, years past notes. Paul had brought this in for formal approval from the board. So, what I've got on the agenda is to approve the temporary part-time, uh, employment of Mick Hatcher and Roger Gosner at a rate of thirty-three dollars an hour. Both of these employees are former county employees that have over thirty years' experience each running a maintainer. They know the routes that need to be run. They know where the problem locations are at. I mean, the, the knowledge that they bring with them is invaluable.
Okay.
And they're limited hours? I mean, what is their limit on that?
Uh, we call them in as needed. Last year, we didn't have a whole lot of hours, but we did have, I think Denny had a hernia surgery, so he was out a couple of weeks, so Roger covered for him during the snow events. Usually the only time that we call them in is during snow events or if we have a safety meeting or, or something along those lines. So, without knowing what kind of winter we're gonna have, I can't tell you how many hours we're gonna end up working.
They understand they may not get any hours too.
Exactly.
We don't go, we don't go to anything.
Yep.
On the other side of the coin is, is when you replace a piece of equipment, the price tag on a motor trailer is.
About three hundred thousand.
About three grand, or three hundred grand. So, you have the ability to not say, God, I hope he was listening when we were instructing, we were showing him, we were doing whatever, and I know that, that I'm gonna get nothing but scolded for that rate. But by the same token, we don't know how many hours and we have the security that they run the equipment and.
But, you know, most of that rates are insured.
These guys stay around Humboldt all winter just because they could get called in.
If you'd hire new people, you'd pay thirteen dollars an hour just for the insurance portion of it.
See, I don't know what, uh, temporary part-time help actually runs for like conservation or anything like that. But that, you know, you're talking nice weather in the summer guaranteed hours and you know you're gonna be sitting in a mower for eight hours all day, every day. You know, this is the crappy weather that nobody wants to go out and.
Five in the morning stuff.
Like Rick said, they are basically on call.
Yep, and, and they're on call, uh, like I said, on, on nights, not nights, but, uh, weekends and early mornings when it's dark.
What, are they, would you say, float throughout the county then where needed? Cause you mentioned one, one of them filled in for Denny when he was out.
One filled in for Denny, uh, one worked up in, in, uh, Bode when we got the April storm here this past year. Cause Dave Tilges had already retired. So, I'm not sure if it was Roger, if it was Mick that went up there and ran that route. Uh, we do have a dedicated temporary part-time route down in this territory. It's the eastern part of Corin's Township. If it gets nasty enough, we pull a person in for that route. And that stems back all the way from when Ron Dickey left and we ended up making short, I believe.
Just about the same rate as you had last year, isn't it?
Yeah, last year's rate was, uh, uh, I, I don't have it on me. It was something like thirty-two dollars an hour. And that was the same rate for the past two or three years. So, it's, it's a bump up. And basically, it's, it's a combination of what the guys are getting on a dollar per hour wage as well as, uh, some of the fringe that they're giving.
All right, I'll make a motion for the hiring Mick Hatcher and Roger Gosner temporary part-time staff at a rate of thirty-three bucks an hour.
No second to that.
I'll have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
At the same time? Motion carried.
Other than that, our construction is done. We're, uh, waiting on the DOT to open theirs, I had heard, the fifth, which is what, Wednesday?
Someone said they were, they were, had a little more to pour.
Really?
That was the rumor that I heard that they had one approach that they didn't like or something and they were gonna, had something to do. Oh, it was the guardrail posts. Don't they have them set yet?
Usually.
Cause it's steel girders?
The, the guardrail posts, as far as the, the wood and steel along that, that I don't know.
Someone said that was what they were gonna try to pour and then either get today or.
See, there's no concrete for, for those. I mean, usually they just drag those into the, drag those into the ground and then the last two pieces are, uh, steel sleeves that, that the post set in.
I don't know. That's what, of course, that's coffee shop, shop, I guess, so.
Oh, the big green's still sitting there.
Yeah.
Well, they were plowing this morning when I was out driving by. They were plowing between the, over to Trestle and I'm like, maybe they're getting ready to open it the next day or so. Cause he was sure pouring the juice on them. Maybe it's just for the chant.
Was that our guys or was that?
No, that was the state trucks. There was three, there was two on our side between, um, John's and the corner. And then there was two on the other side. So, I thought, God, maybe you're opening this up cause I gotta go to Eagle Grove and I wanna.
Be nice.
I'd like to be the little truck there. I guess we'll go when we go.
You want me to find out first? I'll probably call that guy from Houston City again today.
We'd love to.
Supposed to give me a fresh release when they're ready to do it.
Big ribbon cutting?
I don't know about that. Cars won't buy us anything.
And it sounds like the new rep center opens today.
I heard.
I saw a picture.
Heard there was twenty people standing outside the door at five o'clock this morning.
Really? I know there's a lot of cars there.
Well, they had a couple of pictures posted this morning at the front desk of people sitting there and people in line.
When people do the other day, you have a membership card. Also, to take a picture, you have to have both to get in. You push your card in there and it shows your face picture.
I'll bet that's just for the shady people.
Might be. I mean, if you look shady.
Look right at you, Carl.
Anyway, anyway, that's, keep people from loading their card to somebody else.
Swipe the card and pulls up the person's face.
Yeah.
So, I haven't been in there yet, but the pictures look unbelievable, so.
When's the, the deadline for turn-in for county employees?
Um, I think it'll be Friday, but check with them. They may be flexible on.
Okay.
Cause I know somebody else that hasn't done it yet.
I know somebody else that has done it.
I didn't have my wife sign it, so you go.
Waiting to see if she wants a family membership or not.
Nice writing about that in the paper.
Yeah, yeah, that was very nice. Forty years, which one in the center. All right. Other than that, we're plowing roads and sanding roads and, I know Bruce and I talked yesterday. Uh, the guys went out at home time today. There's just, there wasn't much that they're getting of.
They did go out through the weekend and.
They did, they did.
Were Saturday and then they went out, didn't they go out? And the only reason I know, cause I did it in the pen, but they went out Saturday afternoon when they had all the slush and stuff and re-clowed the hardened surfaces to get it before. Cause in the next couple of days, they're talking in the teens, so they got as much of the soup off as possible, so. And it's not only in Humboldt County that we guys select roads, cause Cassuth, Wright, Webster, they're all.
And it's the east west for the most part.
Yeah, the north souths are pretty clear.
That'll be until when switches to the west side, you know?
Yeah.
freezes the other side, but it's winter driving, people.
Yep.
So, okay.
I even skipped a football game Saturday because of winter driving. Wasn't that terrible?
Well, you know, you picked a good one to skip.
So, you're probably the reason.
I stayed home and watched it. Rather than sitting in a dentist's chair.
I had listened to it and I was feeling like I was in a dentist's chair. I was so mad.
Oh, well.
Anyone, I guess that's the best part.
Yep.
Alamo.
All righty, thanks, Ben.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
So, do you want to do our reports or do you want to talk about our, anything else that you got?
Um, I'm hoping for suggestions on the animal contract.
Okay, I gotta find that. I know that Ford Dodge messages had called and wanted to know if we wholesale changed in all of the dog. I said, no, I think that the reason that this was brought up was because of the fact that if you have someone that's trying to enforce, you want to have somewhat the same rules from Humboldt to Thor to Gilmore to wherever. So, that was through, and then, and it's the.
I think what Peggy gave us is a pretty good start, just so we make it applicable to the counties and the small towns and maybe to that livestock.
Yeah, yeah, some of the wording.
Looked, looked like it's pretty well done, this probably. I went through and read the whole thing and there's some things that I scratched clear out. Otherwise, I just changed some of the wording. Uh, I scratched fifty-five, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
What page you on?
Seven, fifty-five, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Fifty-five point twelve?
Yep. I don't think we need any of that trapping.
That's gone, okay.
Trapping the county, so, uh, animal waste, if you get.
Five thirteen?
Five thirteen and fifty-five, fourteen, license. But we might need some of that. Every town's gonna adopt it.
They'll do their own.
They'll do their own.
Just for county. I'm trying to make it, okay, okay, I mean, I agree with you.
That's the little confusing part when you read through it. You gotta look at just for the county's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did leave some of it in there that I thought we probably should have, uh, because we do have housing areas in the county. River Oaks out here and Westport.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I did leave some of that in there, but when I read through it, well, that's basically just change from city to county and.
How about the fee? You agree with those?
Those areas, they under their own little covenants if they want to change things.
Now, what's that?
Uh, those little housing areas, would they have their own little covenants if they want to change things?
I doubt it. They might.
Usually they're governed by the city or the county, whichever, whichever they're in.
And the only thing that I took out on the dangerous animals, bees, cause there is some beehives around the county.
Well, but what if a, what if a colony of killer bees moves in though?
Well, there's still bees around the county, so.
Strike bees, uh?
You've got snakes, people stealing snakes. Uh, I've seen some constrictors around over the years. I know one alligator we had here a few years ago, that didn't last very long. Too cold for it.
What was your theory on the trapping thing that Rick and I were looking at here?
The what?
Well, the full vision on trapping.
Well, then see, cause that, we're talking just county issues, so they're talking cities, so we really don't need it in our county.
Yeah, cause you trap, so there's a lot of trapping going on in the county. Check that whole section out. I have a coon in my backyard. I can't trap him, right?
I think, I think you can live trap him.
You can live trap him.
Okay.
Even this is.
Just don't put your fingers in when you're picking the cage up.
The leg or the parts.
But this would take out to where, but that would be under city order.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
This is just county, so.
That's right.
You know, you're trapping, you're trapping up and through the county, so you, you don't need trapping, cause there isn't a problem.
All right.
Okay, what things do you have, Carl? Suggestions or changes?
Pretty much, I was trying to make it universal for.
Oh, gotcha.
It didn't work. No, it doesn't work.
Um, do we need, does this need to go upstairs? Has John looked at it? I mean, where?
I can't send it up there. I was gonna try to type it up in the, the format that it was like. Cause ours doesn't go by the, yeah.
Right.
Our county format is a little different than the state's and then send it up to John.
That's fine.
But I wanted to change it first.
Right.
Try to make it.
You already take out number seven, about dangerous dogs and breeds and that kind of stuff.
What page is that on? Two seventy-six? Yeah, that was because they took it off, upstate Humboldt.
You can't, you can't, uh, particularly pick on any animal, any breed.
Okay, any other changes? Otherwise, don't do it.
Call the sheriff rather than the city police department.
Right.
Yeah.
And well, at fifty-five, fourteen, we're not gonna have people in the county license their dogs.
We've done that for several years unless you're.
The city of Humboldt did agree that if anybody in the county or these other towns wanted to license their dog, they could go down to the city of Humboldt, they would sell them the license and treat them just like they was a citizen of Humboldt.
And the advantage to that is pretty significant.
Yeah, yeah.
The ability of the dog or cow is picked up, that they can go to the vet or the animal person can scan it.
Yes.
And the tag has your name on it.
Yes.
So, they would be able to be notified as opposed to putting the dog's mugshot or cat's mugshot on Facebook and saying, does anybody recognize this animal?
Yeah, there's.
And that, a bee is like five bucks is what I think it was.
But from a county standpoint, we're gonna strike that, that licensing required.
Mm-hmm.
I think they're required, but, uh, they shouldn't be at least notified that they're, they have the ability to do it. And the city's being pretty appreciative for.
Write out in the paper, pretty good. Um, to notificat, that, like, the suggestion, that, yeah, the city of Humboldt's been very gracious that they will put the same information for any county dog into their database.
Yeah.
On the second page, I scratched out, uh, on number four, leash.
Okay.
Uh, means according chain or similar restraints of sufficient length to retain the animal. Uh, they've got in here not more than six feet in length. I don't think we need that in there.
So, you want it of sufficient length?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Scratch out not more than six feet in length.
Okay.
Cause you're in the county, they're gonna have them on a long chain or a long lead anyway.
Did he help anybody?
What about the abandonment? Cause that's where we seem to have.
Where's that at?
Uh, seventy-seven.
Fifty-five oh three. No owner shall abandon any animal within the county. Did say city limits, but it's within the county.
Well, in my opinion, that's where they all take them.
Yeah.
Cause that's where they show up is somebody dumps a dog out at, uh, north of Gilmore, out by the quarry and they ends up wandering.
Yeah.
I, I can still go back to the same thing as you catch somebody dumping a couch out in the gravel road. I think, I don't know why we can't find, we have to pay for it to be taken.
Like, if you can catch them, you can.
Well, I, I understand that, but I think we can put a little teeth in the abandonment rule if they dump a dog and someone catches you doing it. So, we do, do we do away with it or do you just?
No, no, leave it in there.
Or should you put some teeth in it and?
Is there something preceding this in the actual law that is, you know, if you catch the person, uh?
Basically, all the guys doing there is tell them, don't do it.
Right.
There's no consequences.
No.
But I mean, I don't know if you write that in the ordinance or if there's something pre-existing, that I'm pretty sure there is. Uh, you know, animal cruelty type things, you see that on the same.
Same thing up at the county shed, that we don't allow them to dump refrigerators.
Right.
Car tires, um, whatnot and drive around the east, west side of the shed and see how many things that guys pick up in the dukes that, then we get to haul and dump and pay for it. So.
Right, but I'm saying that's, you know, littering, there's a, there's laws in place for that. I know there's probably laws in place for animal abandonment too.
Yeah.
It's just catching them. Oh, I'm sure there is. And I don't know that you write that into the ordinance. I mean, you could check on it, but I think that if you catch them, there's legal proceedings that you can follow. Yeah, and we say, don't, don't do it, obviously. It's not okay, but take your dog out to the middle of nowhere and throw it out.
Well, it cost me to get my dog out of hock this weekend. I'd like to abandon him too, so.
Seriously?
Again?
No, he had his surgery on his leg.
Oh, he had surgery on his leg, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Good thing it was a dog and not you. There'd have been more debate on the paying up on that.
Probably wouldn't have fixed me up.
There'd be more debate.
Fifty-five oh five, does that mean the owner can't shoot his dog? You get a problem dog out on the farm, no person other than the licensed veterinarian and peace officer has authority to mean kill or figure any animals. I know we shot some dogs, got in the chicken house.
I know.
I know state law is if the dog's on your property and it's harassing your animals, you have the right to shoot it.
I was gonna say, there is a state law.
The state supersedes that one.
So, should we do away with it or?
I'd leave it in there, cause you don't want to poison them. And the state law would supersede that anyway.
Okay.
You have to change fifty-five oh six to county if it wasn't already going at large.
And we know.
Sounds good.
Well, fifty-five oh seven.
Put together right through John, see if we forgot something.
Yep.
Peggy fifty-five oh seven, uh, is unlawful for a person to keep within the county, scratch any livestock and, and just leave in, or any dangerous animal. Cause there's livestock out in the country.
Yep.
Don't go in the bull pasture.
Awesome.
Okay, that's put together. Um, also, Dave had asked if there were any other counties that did the, the same procedure that we do as far as livestock confinement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was at meetings Thursday and Friday in Des Moines with auditors from all over the state. So, I ended up sitting at a table, what's about a half a dozen of them, and I brought it up. And nobody does it.
Nobody?
Nobody at the table, you know. Nobody at the table, you know, that day, there were six other counties with me.
So, they just leave that up to the supervisors then?
No, they leave it up to the, um, whoever handles, handles it, the zoning person, makes the decision, brings it to the board, and.
So he don't take it in front of the board of adjustment or?
They don't do that part of it.
Okay.
But everybody else pretty much had their person, who was the head of the department, that person took care of it.
Okay.
What was your exact question, Dave?
Do you want me to get a hold of more than that, or?
The board of adjustment, we supposed to have a meeting the other night, and they didn't have one because we didn't have a quorum, they feel that, well, if the supervisors are gonna go out and look at them, why should they look at them? So, I said, they said, well, none of the other counties do it, and I said, well, I think there is, so, that's why I had to check on it, and, so.
And there may be some out there, I just, you know, hit up about six other ones that were at my table, but.
So, did you get, who was looking at in, at them in the counties that you talked to?
Board of adjustment.
Board of adjustment?
Yeah.
So you're correct.
The, the zoning and, and the board of adjustment person, which would be Brian, uh, goes out and looks at them, and he usually calls the board of adjustment meeting.
Right.
They decide, and then they kick it on to us.
Right.
Well, they decided that they didn't have to go look at it.
So you were correct from what Peggy?
So I guess my question is?
No, because ours is just, just the zoning person does it, not the board of adjustment.
Oh, not the board of adjustment.
Just the zoning person takes care of it.
Well, it is the board of adjustment that does it.
Pardon?
The board of adjustment is the one that goes and has the meeting and looks at them.
As far as us, but not in other counties.
Yeah, as far as us it is.
But there's a zoning.
Yeah, and if you want me to go statewide with it, I can post it on our statewide auditors group and see if there are others out there that do it differently.
Are they, I guess I'm, I, I'm, are they upset that the board of supervisors is taking the time to have someone look at them, or?
Yeah.
So?
They're upset, well, why should we go look at them if you guys are looking at them? Because we worked out agreement with Iowa Select that when they have a site that they're thinking about in the county, they come to the supervisors and let us know first. Well, the board thinks that they ought to be the ones that notify it, they need the one to go look at it. So if the county supervisor's gonna do it, they're not gonna do it, so, well.
The Iowa Select type companies could notify both, yeah.
Or when we get notified, we notify them.
I mean, I don't want to step on their toes either, but by the same token, it, it's a lot easier, we're either in front of the horse or.
Behind it, we've always been behind it.
We've always been behind it, because when they come, the clock has already started ticking.
Right.
And the way it is now, you guys have gone and looked, and we already are aware, and then they, that's the way I look at it, I don't think anybody's fighting to go see it.
No, but they, they think it's just doubling up.
But it's just keeping both groups involved in it, that's the way I look at it.
They think it's just doubling up on it. Well, this, this one here, we've got a, uh, we supposed to have had a meeting the other night, well, DNR's got an inspection on it. Uh, it's an existing site, they've got several buildings there now, and they want to put, uh, another building up.
Is that the one West River?
Yeah. So, we're gonna, I think it's Thursday, I think it's Thursday afternoon, that we're gonna go look at it, the DNR. Uh, no, tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow eleven o'clock, we got a site visit with the DNR.
And so you're gracious enough that you're doing that, but you're on both boards, right?
Right, I'm on both boards, so, I'll continue doing it as long as it's alright, but I think it needs done.
Well, I think it's a lot easier for you to get the information to us and say that you were standing there when the DNR looked at it, and you aren't getting the interpretation of what so-and-so thought of here.
Right.
I mean, I.
So we can go out there, we can tell the DNR, you know, there's this, this, and this area, you've got piles here, you've got other stuff here that you need to, you've got a well over here, you know, we need to be aware of all that stuff, they need to be aware of it.
So do you have any feedback for what you want to tell, have him tell the, the board? I don't think we're stepping on their toes.
No, no, I, I, I still think they need to be involved in it, because.
I do too.
It, that's the protocol, but that, we were just.
We want to be involved in it also, so we're not the last ones to know about it.
That's the problem, yeah, because ultimately it ends up here, say, okay, here's where it came from, the just, board of adjustment, zoning, whatever, and then we never knew anything about it.
Yeah, it used, it used to be, we heard it from, from secondary roads that there's somebody applied for a driveway permit.
Or when it come up for a vote in here, saying, they let.
They rejected her, they, they've agreed that it's a good site, well, by then, we've already having the location, we've had someone on the site, we've, I just think it works hand in hand to me.
Yeah.
What do Iowa Select, they're notifying us now, I wonder what they do in other counties?
They notify, some of them they notify.
Why can't we just have Iowa Select put them on the same, uh, notification that they allow our zoning board, so they're the planning adjustment board, so that they don't feel like they're being left out? I don't want to make them mad.
No, they need to notify the, uh, well, Brian, as it is right now, the board of adjustment, or the zoning person. They need to notify them when they're coming in, same time to notify us.
Yeah.
I think that would save a lot of problems.
Yeah.
I don't think that, I mean, I hope they are, don't feel like this stuff is just getting rubber stamped.
Yeah.
Is that the way they feel?
I, I, I'm not sure. I know the one meeting, they wouldn't come, the next meeting they came to, and they said, well, there's no sense us doing this, and they left, so, I don't know. Maybe it's a conflict because I'm on both boards, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll talk with them, find out.
Talking about zoning, I think we need to thank Rick for, uh, the edge of the paper, that maybe shakes some people out. Humboldt County tries to hire a zoning manager.
Who?
I put a story in. Kent, Kent.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes, I know.
Thank you, Kent, that'll shake him off, or anybody out there. Well, you know, like, gets, gets in front of more people, and more people see it, more, more interest to get.
Did we, are we still gonna check with other?
I've got all the phone numbers written down, I went and checked everybody's web page to see who the person was in charge, so I could call them personally and just say, are you interested in sharing with another?
I, I think possibly the smaller counties on each, similar size, you know, with like Cokey and Wright.
I know Webster, they're way too busy.
Webster, probably, and Suits would probably be more apt to say, we got more irons than we need to.
Yeah.
That would be my guess, anyway. See what the two on either side of us would be, apt to. Alright. Um, wanna start your committee report?
You bet. I spent a couple days in Des Moines last week, one was, uh, oh, the advisory committee for technology, we didn't really accomplish anything, mainly dealing with mental health and those kinds of reports, computer systems. It took us from ten o'clock to two o'clock to talk about it, so, and then what, I just advisory committee runs through that, and then gets back to the ISAC board, has official, uh, approval of that kind of thing.
What dates were those?
That was Wednesday. On Thursday, we had a two pleasures county, uh, state meeting, and what we did there was talk about all the up county meetings for next year, whether it be new officer school, whether it be state two pleasures, whether it be ISAC breakout sessions, we talked about the speakers we wanted to have, who's gonna invite them, and who's gonna, uh, introduce them, and those kind of things. One of the things we came up with, I think Governor Reynolds will be there, she will receive an award, we're gonna have the Secretary of Agriculture there, some of the meetings, the breakout sessions, so it should be a good year for you guys to sit down there. One of the things we talked about in our supervisor thing, uh, it seems the supervisors in state of Iowa are the only elected officers that do not have a requirement for some kind of CDU, in other words, recorded training, I mentioned that before. Nothing's been cut to stone, this is something they put together just as a starter, but at new officer school, there's gonna be a speaker in January, talk about what we might do to get the supervisors to. What we're finding is that so many of the supervisors get elected and they never leave their county. They care less about what's going on statewide or next door, and their attendance of meetings are coming down, and we're trying to do something to get them, and maybe they don't go, maybe the drainage meeting would be one that counts for CDU, doesn't have to be a state supervisor thing, but anything to get their perspective, other than their neighbor down the road. So that was kind of, we spent four or five hours on that, that was the extent of it. I think there's some good meetings coming up next year, I encourage you guys to take part in them if you could.
I think for the most part, our county has been very active in keeping guys up to speed, especially when they have several different meetings going on at once.
Our county's done more, more than most of them.
We do the splitting up so that we can cover both meetings, regardless of whether it's one, the topic's getting your wisdom teeth or whatever it is, pulling you, sometimes you have to go through those meetings.
The ISAC conference, for example, in March, they're gonna have the county engineers panel talk about the relationship between the engineers and supervisors. We have the same thing for TIP, gonna have some discussion on TIP, we don't understand that. Uh, Secretary of Agriculture, there's a lot of good things coming up, you think, anyway, so don't skip it. Our county's been very much in the lead in doing those kind of things, they're not shooting at us, but our attendance in some of these meetings gone from a hundred and fifty to sixty statewide, and we maybe had five of them there, so that's a, that's a trust we have to keep going. That was the extent of it. Oh, Thursday, Rick and I, or Dave and I are going to Charles City district meeting, if anybody else is available, I'm gonna pick Rick up, or Dave up at seven o'clock, right? I renamed people this morning.
Because I usually go.
Okay.
Yeah, I've gone for the last years, but I got a doctor's appointment that I set up three months ago.
And our county, it's twenty-two counties that they've basically here.
Did that, so you didn't have to go.
Not really, actually, it's a good meeting.
I was gonna say, as long as you haven't been sitting out at your house in the morning, and Dave thinks he's coming to you.
I predict we have snow that day.
Oh, it'll be nasty cold.
Look, it'll be cold.
Every year we've gone, it's blowing, it's about zero out, it's a miserable drive.
You know, I wish, and ISAC's sending Bill and Rachel and guys are going out to all the counties, they have one in, in Buni Vista the day before, Almaty County, you know, they run all over the place, but I wish we had a different district, we have a lot to go with.
Where are you guys going to?
We're going to Charles City, we could do a storm lane.
And even the northeast corner of Charles City.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful drive this time of year to see all the leaves.
Yeah.
It's not fair.
We changed the format this year, though, it used to be, we meet in the morning, and then rehash it, and then ask the legislators to come in the afternoon and rehash it again. Now we're gonna do it all in the morning, legislators to be there, and eat and go home.
So that way they hear our problems that we talk about. Before we used to sit and hash over all of the issues we had going on, then they'd come in.
I think one, one of the things I learned a lot from each county, they call a rule, and each county gives a report of what happens in their county, watch the highlights.
Yeah, well, little break session.
Yeah, that's what I was.
You hear about some of the good things everybody's doing, or sometimes you hear about the problems they got.
Don't you think Dave won't give that report issue?
No. It's your report. It's the last one you get to do.
I'm a lame duck. Dave, I've done it for the last three years.
It's his last official duty.
He needs donuts.
His last official duty.
Let's not report that. We've had a report that Carl just said it's great.
You want to share the wealth.
No, it's, it's a great meeting, that one is one of my favorites, actually.
There's some districts that don't have that meeting, they have the little, little powwow state meetings, we got one of the better districts, they're trying to re, restate them.
We get pretty good attendance up there, too.
Okay.
Now you're done?
I'm done, I'll shut up.
Uh, Tuesday the twenty-seventh, I had the food truck unload the food. That was at ten o'clock, at one o'clock, we went to a veterans affairs meeting, proved all the claims. We're still running under budget, so we're good there. Wednesday the twenty-eighth, I had a regional five hazmat meeting in Fort Dodge. Um, here's the new book, we had a guy from Pierce give us a presentation, we're comparing apples to apples. The truck that we looked at last year, a year ago, that was trying to get funds for, was six hundred and ten thousand.
Oh, for a lot.
This one here, and the six hundred and ten for a hazmat truck. This one here is seven hundred and seventy, sixty, seventy thousand, and the one from last year is already higher than this one. That's comparing apples to apples, the same truck.
Going up a hundred grand a year.
Hundred grand, that's what they took off.
Is that, how many counties does that then?
Nine counties.
Nine counties, so at least we're only paying a nice of the.
Yeah, so we're looking at probably per capita, I think right now we're at one fifty. I think what we was at to pay off that one debt down there, it'll drop back to a buck and a quarter or per capita. We're looking at maybe going up to, uh, one seventy-five or two, we're gonna be a committee to get together and see where we can, what we can do and get it.
What's so special about this truck?
It's got all the hazmat stuff in it.
But all the equipment.
All the equipment.
Is it, is it similar to like a rescue van or a rescue truck?
It's more so probably.
Yeah, I'd like a big rescue truck.
So it would be like our.
Picture of it in here someplace.
Rescue, one that the fire truck has.
Right, fire truck, it's had a place for them to go in, change clothes.
Right.
Uh, clean up if they get sprayed with chemicals or something. The one they have now is just a pickup, or like a truck, uh, it's twenty years old. It's got a lot of stuff they don't use, they spec this out for everything that they can use in a hazmat. And, uh, if they come to Humboldt County, say they come up here to, or go out to Bill, wherever that's Bill was at, that's the company that pays the bill for them to come up and clean up. Uh, so, it's just a, um, basic truck, but it's a, well, it's a big tandem truck with the jump seats in it. You can see, there's a picture of it in here, on one of the layout of it.
Seven hundred some thousand, I don't have a full bar.
There's a, there's a picture of it.
Living quarters, I was gonna say.
There's more. It's, it's a good sized truck.
Looks like a U-Haul bus, I mean.
So are those guys on call?
They're, they're on call through the Fort Dodge Fire Department.
Hazmat crew that's using Fort Dodge.
If we don't use the region five, the one in Fort Dodge, we would have to call one out of, uh, Council Bluffs or Omaha, uh, Des Moines, we'd have to call one of the others out. Uh, luckily, Fort Dodge does have one, and they have the trained people that's there.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's went up over a hundred thousand from last year for the same, pretty much identical truck, except this company here, they build it from the chassis up, everything, the other one, um, they build it, uh, they buy the chassis and then build on, the truck on it. This, this company is all one, they were talking about leasing too.
What, uh, kept them from, I remember that you had this discussion, well, a year ago, about the six hundred and some thousand dollar, what prevented them from getting that?
Money?
Same thing as preventing them from getting now.
So this company's got a lease program too, where we could lease it for ten years and trade it back in, and we've talked about a used one. So now we're gonna get a committee together, um, I think Rick is on it, uh, myself, a guy from Carroll County, one from Webster County, I believe it is, there's like four or five of us gonna go on it, and we're gonna figure out where we can get the money, what we gotta do, fundraisers, you know, go to these businesses like, uh, La Guori out here, they have the ad hydrers, or, among the elevators, and see if we can get donations from them.
It'll be like Coke and Fort Dodge.
Yeah, Coke down there, uh, the ones that need the hazmat, hazmat stuff, so. But this truck, the truck they have now, they had two major incidents, uh, one of them was a training that broke down on the way. They had an incident down in, uh, I think it was Jefferson, and the brakes went out on the truck. Another time they blowed a tire and it tore up part of the underbody part of it, so it's, it's in bad shape, it needs change.
And what would the life expectancy be on this new one?
The one we have is twenty years old.
Right, so this new one, you're hoping it's gonna go twenty-five, thirty, depending on how many miles you put on in a year?
They probably don't get wore out, they probably just.
Get old.
Yeah. Right, right, ain't centered with five hundred thousand miles.
I was gonna say, I bet it's got more idle time on the motor than it does.
Well, the sad thing about this, I think you had the same discussion a year ago, it's the stupid. Well, the sad thing about this, I think you had the same discussion a year ago, it's just too bad they didn't move on. Did, when you said the fundraising, has any of that been explored?
Um, you know. The guy that headed that up at that time, his wife got sick and he's kind of backed out and so it didn't go anywhere.
That's unfortunate.
So now we're looking at it again and we're going to get different committees.
Do all the counties have to come up with per capita input?
Yes.
If some county refuses to do anything, do they cut out their services?
Yeah.
That's good. Everybody's sharing.
Yeah, it's all shared. Uh, our secretary down there, she retired and we had to buy out, um, part of her deal from the college and the college, uh, portion of it, so we raised the ca, per capita, I think it was twenty-five cents. And now this next quarter, it drops back down to a dollar and twenty-five cents. We raised it to a dollar and a half for two months to cover them expenses. Now it's going to drop back down for the next quarter.
Well, unfortunately, in this part of the area of state or this part of the country with as many anhydrous tanks as there are, as many ethanol tanks that go up and down the rail and, um, the chemicals like, you know, Van Diest over there, Webster City, the person knew how many tankers.
And everything's bulked.
Stuff going in and out of that place, if they tipped over, if it.
And these farmers have awful chemicals.
I was going to say, if you stop and think about just the rural agriculture, all of that's hazardous material.
Exactly. So, you know, when you tip it out, if one gets over its corner, you gotta have the access or it's coming from Des Moines.
Prayer.
You got, you got the railroad, train derailment.
Oh, yeah.
You know, these ethanol cars, you got a spill. Um, they have a fuel spill up here at one of the fuel, gas stations.
Yep, it's something that's needed. Too bad that the, your committee kind of disbanded on you a year ago.
But. Yeah, we're, we're working on it. We're going to be meeting again on it here another week or so and see where we can go. We're considering leasing one. And that would be considerably less.
But in the long run.
Ten-year lease on it and then trade it back in.
I guess that's, you know, that, that might be an option, but leasing to me usually ends up costing you more in the long run if it's something that you're going to keep.
Right.
You just.
Depends on if it's something that changes often. You know, Dave, you gotta constantly updating your equipment. Sometimes it's better to lease.
Right.
There you go.
I've got the specs on the old truck if anybody wants to look at them and this one from last year. Okay, then on Thursday the twenty-ninth, I had a workforce development. I had a conference call, eight-thirty in the morning. And I've got a conflict this week. On Wednesday, there is a workforce development meeting. And we would like to have a representative from Humboldt go down. If any of you guys want to go down for a meeting. Try to get Carl to do it because he got me stuck on that board, but I've got.
I'll be in Almaty until about four o'clock. If I get back to time, I, I wouldn't mind going again, but don't plan on that.
I've got a Midas meeting and a workforce development meeting at the same time.
Wasn't that Thursday?
Thursday, or Wednesday. Wednesday at four o'clock.
Iowa Central.
Yep.
Well, I have an EMA meeting. And another meeting at four o'clock.
Yeah, these usually last about an hour.
Yeah, good cookies too, yeah.
Now that has been started, I can tell.
We just got all kinds of things to do though.
And besides, I should have the truck running up and down the road to try to make some money.
Anything hot on the agenda? They have to have a quorum?
Uh, yeah, they, they, uh, just called them the other night or the other morning was, uh, we had to vote the CEOs, uh, county elected officials. Uh, there's five of us, five county area in the workforce development and we had to vote on training money to go in the budget. So they, that officially gets put in the budget at this meeting. But, uh, you, your CEOs have to have a quorum of three of us, I think it is. Uh, so we need to get represented. She says if we don't have a quorum, they might call one of us. But I've got the, the Midas meeting at the same time, so. I'm going to go to it because that's a lucky meeting. That's all I had.
I didn't have anything near as exciting as Dave this past week, but on Tuesday the twenty-seventh, I was here for the second of two demonstrations for the county website from the Solutions people. Uh, that was interesting as the first one was.
Forgot about that page.
It was interesting. Yep, Max, Max did that one, so we have, uh, more information on websites.
I think they're a good organization. I guess that's solutions.
Yeah, Solutions was good. Yeah, I enjoyed the one previous week. So that was good to, something we'll be discussing, I'm sure, here in the near future. So that was all, anything close to official that I had this past week.
Okay, about the only thing I had official was landfill. We had a secondary roadside, went out there and pulled, I think you said forty-one loads of dirt out to landfill to fill in the low areas that the DNR complained about with water stands. With water stand, seeps into the ground, then it gets into the leachate that gets into the pond that we have to haul away. So we try to keep that graded so the water runs off and, and, uh, been a nice job out there and seeded and should keep the DNR happy. So that was Wednesday.
All right, on Tuesday, I, we did the first half of the Solutions website and then I got or the text, the food pantry truck was here, so I slipped off, ran over and helped unload the food pantry truck. And then, uh, five-thirty, I went to the Edmold meeting in Eagle Grove, which was supposed to have been switched to, uh, Fort Dodge and they've realigned all of the, that, but, um, we haven't, uh, they switched it back to Eagle Grove because of the fact they aren't going to use Fort Dodge, they aren't ready for the meetings down there. So Alyssa's building is, or our meeting is now going to go to Fort Dodge instead of Eagle Grove. They've cut down the ma, number of people that are going to be attending those. They also put, uh, we each got a new laptop. And I said.
Really, one more?
Seriously? Um, I, I have one through the county. I said, "Can't we use my county one?" And I'll give you the address so that I, I said, "I'm having a hard enough time checking email for my county one, let alone my personal one now. You want to give me the third one?" So, oh, yeah, if we'd have known that, we wouldn't, but each one of us got.
You got another laptop.
Rick Rasmussen, I, he's, I think he maybe just has it worse with computer skills, but, so he's got one too, but, yeah. So now we're, they're trying to do away with all the paper.
Yeah, oh, geez, you used to get a stack of paper like that.
There were seven, seven dollars worth of mailings from, uh, Gretinger for last week's meeting. You know, it's all the budget, all the.
Per person, probably.
Per person.
Yeah, because I mean, you get a stack like this.
So that's the deal. They're going to email everything. It's going to go on paperless and so now I'm going to turn my computer in before, I said, "I'll just have them put it on my other one," so that's the plan. Um, and I didn't, I looked at this this morning, I forgot all about it. I'm going to get scolded and they had the Chamber meeting on Friday for the CFR and I forgot to go to it, so I'm sure I'm going to be the.
CFR's got a meeting tomorrow too.
Did you?
We got one tomorrow.
Is that here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think you missed it.
You didn't miss anything yet.
Well, I thought it was on the thirtieth.
The thir, the fourth. Three-thirty to five-thirty. You gotta call if you want to go.
Well, I, I'm on the board, so I don't know if I have to call them or I'm assuming, I assume I'm going to be there.
Yeah, I was going to bring that to you.
Where's it at?
Didn't you get your card?
I got my card, but I.
The new Humboldt Chamber office.
So that, is that back?
Next to the jewelry store, isn't it? The way the old jewelry store went next to Humboldt Realty? I think that's where.
Is that where it is now?
Yeah.
So Chamber office.
Oh, next to Scott's office there, okay. Oh, they actually got a map there, you see.
Chamber office and that's what time for?
Three-thirty to five.
Was it open house? He said about their new building or?
This is about the new building down in Fort Dodge.
So I should probably come get an interview at that time, huh?
Snacks will be served.
One of the, huh?
Snacks will be served.
Hopefully, uh, you know, that's going to be an awesome facility and I think we're going to talk about that first United, our CFR meeting in Webster City where, where they're at, um, it's still projected to be done by, they got it all enclosed and they're kind of like the hospital out here and they got the plastic up and trained to do masonry work and whatnot and, but they got it all sheet rocked upstairs, so. That's all I have.
First one, it came to me a few weeks ago, but.
Um, any other, anything else you guys have?
Any movement on a zoning person, any applications that result in advertising?
No, we're not doing advertising anymore that expired, so.
I would let you know for, um, Rick Hopper called. They're coming down this morning to meet with, uh, the contractor doing sub-five of eleven, trying to get a tentative plan as to what they're doing out there as far as, um, if they can keep digging, how long they're going to plan on staying at it and what the, would happen if they, the weather turns as cold as it's supposed to, um, how they're going to shut things up and if they would come back. So he's going to hopefully have an update for us, uh, soon. Supposedly King has found a machine, a found a rip, a part that, uh, is going to be, um, somewhere in the United States that is going to be able to be shipped to Des Moines to get that and they have all intentions of coming back and, um, getting more pipe delivered and continuing to dig. That's what Rick told me as of this morning. I'm hoping that's true because we're all a little nervous about that, so. That's all I know.
I have a question, Peggy. Was looking at December calendar.
Yeah.
Christmas Eve, we're going to meet, New Year Day we're going to meet, New Year Day we're going to meet?
No.
We, we.
I will bring that to you so you guys can decide. You'll need to change the dates around. Uh, because we will not only be closed the twenty-fourth, but we'll be closed the twenty-fifth. So that would mean you would meet on the twenty-sixth if you're going to meet that week at all. We, we almost have to, we have planes.
Yeah, we got to meet sometime.
So, yeah.
I'm going to be on an airplane to Houston that day.
All right.
Orlando or wherever the hell it is.
Did you, did you sign up?
I bought my ticket already.
Did you sign up?
Yep.
No, I don't.
I bought a meeting.
Did you sign up for missing the meeting?
I didn't know, that's the reason I was asking. We, we're airplane, they used it twenty-sixth.
Well, we won't vote on it, see if that's a while.
Speaking of important dates, do we have a set date for Carl's open house, retirement, going away? We better write that down.
We have a little note.
Carl? You have it in your calendar? I have it written down in my office.
We better make sure and get that, that's very important.
I wrote it down the nineteenth, two to four.
Nineteenth from two to four.
Invitation for oil probably next week.
But I can't be here the twenty-sixth unless I give up an airplane ticket and the ticket. Those tickets cost three hundred dollars for my wife and I together.
That, that's cheap. I thought they were talking on the news last night. They're like six hundred bucks.
That's just the tickets.
Well, just an FYI for, um, Wright County, uh, Rick Rasmussen told me that they're having a open house for Stan on, uh, seventeenth over at the Wright County Courthouse from two to four also. Stan Watney, for those of you that had the pleasure of being on any board with Stan, he will leave an impression in your mind that never left still.
That's right.
What time is his Florida savings?
Uh, Wright County Courthouse.
We always had some very lively conversations up at our meeting in Charles City.
Well, he's on the CFR board and once in a while, Michelle brings dilly bars.
Yeah.
You swear to God, the kid was four years old. I love dilly bars. With that, I think we're done. We've blowed through it and.
I'll move with adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
All right.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Nine checks.